Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call a meeting to order.
And I just, Kristen's going to call in.
And would you all please stand while we do the paperwork.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very first item of business is to introduce where likely who is going to be joining us. We welcome you aboard.
Thank you very much. Happy to be here.
Good. Okay. Has everybody had an opportunity to view the minutes? Excuse me. Uh, or our, uh, orders.
You can't vote no votes?
No, I have, I have just not.
No, I know, I'm just saying. If you've been on the council, that's why you couldn't vote.
Okay. I'm just saying, look.
Okay. Anybody say anything? Like, why?
Just a couple of things.
I'm retiring this.
Just a simple thing. Uh, on page four, for, uh, because of the old business, there were, um, actually four meetings that were announced. At the top.
Yeah.
Three meetings announced there.
There was, the fourth one was the, uh, back to the third in order. It was at 2:00 PM on September 10th. Was the charrette that we had here at the senior center.
I thought that was someplace else. I don't know. I'm not working that one simply. Are you talking about September 9th charrette?
Yes, that was.
Oh, yeah, that was Monday night.
That was the Monday night. Then it was, well, at 2 o'clock here.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't put the 2 o'clock one in there?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, 2 o'clock. Any else?
John did.
So there are three cards?
Yes, yes.
One for Dave and one for Kevin.
And then there's a retirement one for Kathy. That you've cut your hand right now, John.
One more of the flowers.
Yes.
Uh, if any other comments or corrections, please. August 18th.
The only question that I have that I think has been answered is, uh, the minutes were done by Sheila Dorr? Is that because she retired?
No, no. Sheila, Sheila is the administrative assistant or secretary of the select board. She took the minutes.
Okay.
So I had, I had to delineate that separation.
Thank you.
Please, will you approve a portion of it?
That's on my desk.
Oh, okay. Sorry to cut you off.
Okay. Should I write, make that hopefully, which I write? I, I don't know why should I sign?
Oh, family commitments.
Family commitments, okay, okay. So, should I sign?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
I did.
I did, I did. So Mr. Dorr, please. Nice thing, uh, for patient time.
It's already, yeah. About 3:00 AM.
Oh, absolutely.
Is there any other?
Yes.
Changes to, uh, being on October 19th? August 19th?
No, September 9th. This is September 9th. We only had, that was last time.
Okay.
I'm moving to accept it.
Everybody's running here, right?
Yeah. Do we have any extra agenda for today?
Um, yeah, yes. September.
We have them right here.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry, I made the copies and I just didn't get up to get them.
Thank you.
That's a great thing. This was John, man. Got them all ready? I'm going to accept. Any seconds?
Yeah, yeah.
Quido. Need to vote?
Oh, all in favor? I, I.
Any opposed?
Okay, we will continue on with our meeting.
So, just don't open the door. Nope.
Yeah. Oh. Alma, we look for you for community design for our day.
John can do it. Well, she's much better versed in all of this than I am, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sure I forget something.
Um, well, Alma, you can certainly chime in because you've been at these meetings as well. Um, so just to, kind of where we're at today. The, as many of you have participated in multiple opportunities to provide feedback, thank you. Um, the design team has received a lot of feedback through the community design charrette process, as well as a lot of the information provided by stakeholder groups. Um, at this point, they have been incorporating a lot of that feedback into the preferred design. Um, for this current stage, their contract requires them, the deliverable is a schematic design. Um, if you have looked at the town meeting warrant, you will see that Article 9 seeks funding for the next phase of the project, which would get us to full design and bid documents ahead of the March 2025 town meeting. So, the design team will do a presentation tomorrow night to the select board. I would encourage you, you can come out in person, uh, you can watch it live, or Westboro TV reports it. Um, but you are certainly welcome to watch that. They will, in, the feedback that's been incorporated into their design, um, some of the things around, um, for instance, the elevator in the stairwell, the second elevator in the stairwell, um, address some of the things we heard about if they were too open, noise coming down, um, from upstairs. They have also updated their design to show what a potential fit-up of all of the space might look like. And they've chunked it out into phases, so assuming that we would take a phased approach and not do everything at once. They've also just, I think it's tough when you saw big chunks of space that just said future fit-up. Um, they've actually shown what that could look like. I think, for me at least, um, I need to see it. It's hard for me to picture it unless I can see it. Um, so that's something they'll present tomorrow night. Um, there is still opportunity for some feedback ahead of town meeting. They will also present the municipal building committee on October 17th. That is also a public meeting. So if you can't catch it tomorrow night, then are interested in coming out. That's municipal building committees. Yep.
When do they meet?
October 17th. Um, I would have to check. I don't know if it's town hall or the Forbes Municipal Building. But we can certainly, they would, they post an agenda, so. So, the, um, I think the positive thing is, is I said, a lot of the feedback that we heard, and as I think many of you are aware, um, because you went to multiple sessions, we heard, um, a number of things we heard over and over again, which is always helpful. Um, so some of those things have been incorporated. Um, the article in the warrant seeks to, um, fund the next stage, which is 1.12 million dollars to do the additional design work. And again, that gets us a complete design. There is public engagement in that portion, in that section of the work or that, that process as well. And then they will develop bid documents, which allows us to actually put the project, the construction out to bid and have firm pricing to then fund that and, um, seek funding for that in March. Um, so you just want to stress that it's even written in the article. This next phase will also include public engagement. The designs that will be shown tomorrow night are not the final designs, um, but they are the preferred design, which again was the deliverable based on the feedback at this point. Um, so I think one of the things we were looking for is for the council on aging to take a vote in support of the warrant article. Um, basically, this is the funding that's necessary to, for the project to continue. So again, we're at schematic design now. The next, um, round of funding would get us to final design and a firm cost to then go back for construction funding, which is typical of how many of our projects, our delay projects go, seeking the money along the way. Um, we do have proposals in hand from the architect BH Plus A and our owner's project manager, CHA, um, to continue with those two entities through the next phase. So I think many of you have met, um, Joel and Nancy are the, the, the two primary folks from the architectural firm. Um, and then Alicia has been our owner's project manager. And they've been great to work with under the procurement laws because when we put the, um, initial request for proposals out, we identified that we may continue with them or allowed to do that. So at this point, we're seeking to use those folks as we continue into the next phase.
Okay, one question. When you said they're working on the schematics, um, the last meeting, the charrette meeting, it was the one plan that they were kind of honing in on? Is it going to be more than one at this point?
They have one, we're calling it the preferred design.
Okay.
It's not final. That's, that's what would happen in the next phase. But this is basically showing, based on the programmatic information, um, how it really fits into that space. They did address some of the things related to, um, just, just for, um, the benefit of those of you who heard this. Um, the entry, when you enter the senior center, um, the lounge area is larger. They better showed how the multipurpose, um, the multipurpose room seating, they, they put some, um, they depict tables and chairs in that room. Um, but then they also have some other renderings. So the, the layouts that you all saw were kind of the flat tootie. They actually have some of the, I don't know what they're called, but, um, do you?
Yeah, I mean, it was actually kind of cool to see them because I, I'm like, a lot of people, I, you know, it's there. But once I saw the pictures, the artificial intelligence pictures, um, it, it all started to actually make sense how things were going to go in there, so.
Yep.
Yeah, what time is the selectman meeting?
Um, it starts at 6:00. I can pull up the agenda and let you know what time that presentation is on the agenda.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, any other questions?
You mentioned that this is a typical approach, uh, to, to ask for funding, uh, you know, mentally. In fact, I'm just curious, how does the million dollars for this phase, for the size of the space, how does that compare to other costs of, of, of similar size?
Um, yes, I don't, I don't know.
It seemed like a lot of money given, people already got a lot done.
Um, it is, I mean, these projects are always expensive. I mean, I, I agree, a million dollars is a lot, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's anything beyond what we're expecting.
Sorry if I put through Linda's chair. Um, I just wanted, if anyone wanted to watch it on Westboro TV while Kim is looking for the time on the agenda, I just wanted to make sure people knew, if you're watching it on TV, it's on Verizon 28. And it's on Charter 192. As well as online, but it's, it's online on Westboro TV's. I'm sorry, say it again.
Verizon is 28, but you'll, you'll.
The charter is 192.
Spectrum.
Spectrum, sorry, yeah. And then it's on our YouTube page as well, the Westboro TV YouTube page. But for people who want to watch it on TV, I just want to make sure you knew what channel, so you're not flipping around trying to find it. Sorry, I know that's out of order a little bit. Thanks.
So when you say online, online, what, what does that mean?
If you were to go to YouTube, so if you went to YouTube and there's a search bar across the top, you could type in Westboro TV, so two words with the Westboro spelled out. And, excuse me, you would land on our Westboro TV channel and you'll see live, Westboro Select Board. And you could click on it. The nice thing about that, John, is that you can, let's say, I don't know what time Kim's going to tell us it is, let's say it's at 6:20 and you're not able to look until 8:30. You can just back up. You can grab on the YouTube and back the little playhead up to 6:20 when the presentation is happening. So if you got in there late, you can, you can back it up. When you're watching on TV, it's either live or not, unless you know how to record it, in which case you could record it and watch it at a different time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, so it's on the agenda for 7:20. Uh, sometimes we run ahead, sometimes we run, run behind, but something like this, we would probably try to stay pretty close to 7:20, just anticipating people maybe tuning in specifically for this item.
Is this going to be in the town hall?
Yes.
Any other comments?
Any of those phases considered, I see it was South Row. Um, seniors center had a recent addition. But they used the Acid Valley Visual Vocational High School, uh, students, uh, to do actual construction of some rooms and also electrical plumbing. Uh, would Westboro consider having them bid on something?
They don't bid on it. They actually, um, they don't charge when they, typically they don't charge for those projects.
Somehow use them.
Um, potentially, but I, it's, it's something we haven't discussed at this point, but I think as we get closer, we can figure out. Um, it just, when it's, there's some considerations, but it's certainly something we can, we can evaluate.
Apparently they did an excellent job. Oh, it's beautiful, I see. We were there when they had it, and they're really cutting the front end. It's beautiful. Could be a good opportunity for that.
Yes. Um, they do wonderful work. They're in high demand, too.
Wonder how you get on their list if they do a little warm-up or something?
It, it just, again, we're, it's pretty much early. We don't have a final design yet. It's really hard out, but I think it's something that, that. Um, so just back to the, the warrant article. So really two different things. Um, there's a presentation tomorrow night, but then, um, town meeting is Monday, October 21st, 7:00 PM at the high school. Um, Article 9 is the 1.12 million to do the next phase, the design work. So, um.
Kim, are there any, uh, other articles related to this project that will be on the town hall?
Yes.
The standard? Another question.
So I, I know the language here is pretty standard. We always talk about borrowing and doing the other things. But are we, uh, able to consider, uh, using existing funds? We, we've always talked about there being funds from the Pulte and, you know, other sources that are intended for senior.
Right. We're still looking at all of that to figure out, yes.
And so that's why the language is like this, but hoping that the, in doing the borrowing.
Right.
That you were.
We're looking at the way we would fund it, yeah. I don't, I don't have the answer yet.
So you'll have a recommendation at town meeting?
Oh, yeah, we have to identify at town meeting.
The actual.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. When the motion is made, it will include, exactly.
So we will both to support this article at the town meeting. Am I reading that correctly? Oh, do it now, okay. All righty.
Oh, I'm sorry. The language in there, it is, it does talk about a borrow. So you're right, the language at the beginning, that's the standard language, but then if you, it authorizes the treasure with the approval of the select board tomorrow.
Is there certain promise that we should do this? Um, do they just, they move to support, recognize that the October 21st town meeting uh, don't, for the next phase of the community center? Yes. That's the best way to do it. So what do you think is one of the, you know?
Or say design.
Say the, the next phase, because the next phase.
Yeah.
So can I get a clarification, though, of what you just said? In other words, the language in here then specifies that the only option is to borrow the billion dollars?
It authorizes the treasure with the approval of the select board to borrow, yes.
But that's just an option. It's not a requirement.
Um, that's identifying within that, within the article, but that's the approach.
I don't know.
What are the meeting protocols?
The article.
Oh, okay. Warrant, yep.
The warrant protocol.
Did you share that with people or not?
No, I haven't even seen it myself yet.
It's posted online.
Yeah, it is. I just haven't had time to get to it.
The select board voted to close the warrant at their meeting last Tuesday. So the warrant, the final version of the warrant is available on the town's website.
Okay, that's a, thank you.
So at this time, members of the council, um, if I vote to support the motion. Who makes the motion?
Somebody, I can't do it. I'll make a motion, baby.
It's actually funny to understand that we're agreeing to this, and we're agreeing that the billion dollars has to be borrowed, and there isn't even an option to change that between now and then.
Well, there isn't an option because the warrant's closed, I guess, is the other.
But, so can we prove the, the money, but not the, uh, you know, not the fact that it's kind of being borrowed amount?
No. You've got to approve the article as it's written. So you approve it the way it's written, or you don't approve it the way it's written. That's your option to do that.
So that wouldn't take into account your suggestion about acid.
No, because this is just the design. No, this is just to fund the design.
It was that much to fund the design itself?
Yes.
That's why I was asking, it seemed like a lot.
It does.
So that's the final things.
So there'll be another article on next, yeah, there'll be other phases. There'll be an additional article on topic.
So in one of those phases, that would be considered. What, what funding?
You're making.
I'll wait, I'll look at the actual article and why to do it. Okay.
Okay, okay. Okay. I guess, yeah, if you haven't seen the article and you're not comfortable voting on it, I think it's reasonable, um, to abstain. Well, no, I think we're all. Yeah.
Quido go? Yeah, just make a decision.
I mean, we talked about the fact that we would ask for a vote today, so I think it's reasonable that, that council members see the, the language.
So we'll be voting on every things.
You're just voting whether, so I'm sorry, let me step back. So in town meeting, the moderator will, when articles come up, the moderator will opt in. Um, boards or committees that are involved in specific articles or support actions of certain articles, the moderator will, um, offer them the opportunity to speak in favor or opposition to an article. Um, so given that this is the article that would fund design work for the community center and that this board has been involved and, I believe, generally very supportive of the, um, the senior center moving into that space, um, I, I thought that it would probably be beneficial for the council to take a vote and to report out a town meeting.
Kim, does the finance manager for the town decide on the different ways that we could borrow the money?
Yes, the finance, yes.
All right, and so, um, that hasn't been laid out yet?
No, it has. They've looked at it.
At the different ways you can be funded, okay.
So the view is expressed that you have to vote on Article 9 and can't change it. Uh, it's an article. You can file a motion to amend an article, so why can't it be changed?
Um, I'm, I'm getting some clarification from the finance director.
Just like in school.
Just like in school.
Absolutely like.
Vito was not here when I posed my question, so I take it with the help of some people who raised the area that we're in. And, uh, the question that I raised, Vito, was this is an article at town meeting. In a town meeting, you have a right to file a motion to amend an article. And so I think that this article is open to, uh, possibly, and people wish to do so.
It does say borrow or transfer from available funds.
That's why I asked whether there's options that's, that later on, if, if, um, specific to the borrow or the rest is a threshold or something.
But that's a good point to bring it up there.
Yeah, I'm trying to get clarification from the finance director, so.
Excuse me, if all had an opportunity to read this article. 9, I have the motion on the table. Just trying to think how it symbolizes a small motion. I don't want to put the whole.
I can, um, hang on, I'm texting with John, the finance director, so let me get to an answer. All right, so the design is intended to be a bar, um, not to be a bar. Okay, so available funds, um, from the Pulte. Okay, so the, Del Webb, when that was developed, there was an agreement, um, there was funding from that that is restricted use for purposes for seniors. So apparently that's available funds that the intention is to use those to fund the design phase. The money isn't that fund, they're restricted, um, the use is restricted for projects for seniors. For rental housing, for rental housing, I don't know that. It's enough to cover the design. And 3.4 million currently is in the fund, so this 1.2, 1.12, um, would be used from the existing 3.4 million funding. So the language that's in there is standard language. It, it gives you the option, and then the language in there about the treasure or the, that's for the approach to be to borrow, that authorizes the treasure to borrow.
So this isn't, is it any, this is it, this is the article. So we could, I could just make a motion to approve article nine for town meeting, for the 21st. As written, just leave it that. I don't know, it's a. Otherwise I have to.
No, I think, yeah, I think that's fine. This is the final version of the warrant, so this is, article nine won't be changed, and so I think you're fine just to reference article nine of the, um, October 21st special town meeting warrant. Yeah.
I'll check.
And you pose.
John.
John.
Kim, I have one question. Where does this fit in with the presentation we attended, uh, in the town hall, uh, when there were different variation presented of, uh, what they were doing?
Um, when they provided at that point three, I think actually four options.
Yeah.
So they now have, uh, um, what we're calling the preferred design. They will present that tomorrow night. They have, I think up until Friday, they were making some tweaks to it, so they've incorporated the feedback that was received, um, and a lot of the feedback that was received during the design charrettes that were held. Um, so they've made some changes, so I think it's really, I think they worked largely off of what they call the fourth design, um, and have further refined that.
Kim, will that design be on the internet before the select meeting?
After the meeting, we'll post.
After?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, shall we go on with this? Oh, programs. So all of a sudden it got real busy again. And, um, we're very, uh, starting two weeks ago, our strength in the elements class moved to the community center on Wednesdays and Fridays. Um, the Wednesday classes are more, is an advanced class, the Friday classes kind of the same. Um, and starting next two, next Wednesday morning, um, I met with the, um, I met with the Parkinson's support group back in September, and they were very, very interested in doing, uh, having someone come into the boxing class for them, and that's going to start on the 16th, and I, um, because class size is kind of limited, I put a little thing in the newsletter, but I also, um, took some flyers up there, and I think we've already had half a dozen people call this morning to register, so I'm very happy about that. It's in October six, uh, 16th, oh, yeah. And then on, November 7th, there would be a free class, but starting on the 12th and the 14th, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, um, through Christmas, there will be a, um, classical ballet for seniors. That will be started, um, also at the community center. So we're kind of happy about, you know, getting some stuff going on here.
October.
Oh. My worst nightmare. The newsletter. It should be here by the time we get done with this meeting. It's been removed and delivered. And I apologize for that. It, it was done, and then I had to change it, and I didn't have enough room. There's very little artwork this month, um, but it's done, it's taken, it's kind of in here, not yet, however. And I apologize that it has been, it was online. Um, Kristen did make copies of the calendar page for people. People are calling and registering for stuff, so, and somebody's maybe getting something else. Yeah. I said very little artwork, it was pretty squishy. Um, the fair is coming up, the supporters have been, um, working very hard, trying to get this together. They will need your help this year. And, um, she's been ordering documents, I think the menus have been set, but, and Jen Dory is the one who's chairing the fair this year, which is wonderful. It's great. It will not be a silent auction table this year. So. Yeah, yeah.
Do you know the hours of that?
10 to 2. What?
Would it be a grandma or beer party?
It's called Cheryl's Closet.
Oh.
I didn't name these things. We're working with some teachers here. I, I love the name of this.
What day is the fair?
Saturday, November 23rd. I still won't be in this room. I, I, I'm not going to be here.
I know having jewelry in that room, I know we missed a few things because people hate.
So somehow we have to. Put a sign up that says pay me jewelry before you can stop it. Enter this room or something? Well, there's flashing lights on the bridge downtown, and they don't. Yeah, we did our first, um, angles with the boy's selectman, and, um, it worked out very well. Quite a few people had come. Um, and it's, you know, we're, we're chugging along, and shredding is on Monday, 28th of October from 10 to 1.
It's Monday.
It's Mon, it's always Monday.
Always Monday.
Yep, the last Monday in April and the la, well, I think one of the, the either, uh, Central Lawn or the li, somebody else might be doing it. So.
I have a question on that.
We've got a couple more weeks to, yes, John?
I've had some people express to me that they don't want to bring shredding here because they don't think the material is shredded on site.
It is absolutely shredded on site. You can stand, you can stand right there and look in that window, and when he dumps the bucket in, you can see all little pieces of paper.
I've been telling people.
It is shredded on site. It absolutely is, and if anybody is spreading a rumor that it isn't, they're, they're wrong, as it is. And that's why we do it this way, so. If they were going to take it someplace, I wouldn't, we wouldn't be doing it.
Why are we doing this shredding?
Yeah, I, I.
I don't know. They shred it on site, but.
I would imagine they probably do, because, like I said, the truck is here, I mean, you can't miss the truck. Uh, Mary Ellen has put together some other programs for the holidays. There's, um, oral arrangement class for Thanksgiving, and you can make a boxwood tree in December. The Worcester Menace Song is going to be here for a evening performance like they did down the last couple of years, which will be very nice. I think it's, um, December 18th, with that, so, and the song. I'm sorry, the Worcester Menace, I have something going on in my throat. The Worcester Menace Song will be here on the 18th at, I believe, 7 o'clock to do their holiday, um, performance like they did last year, and I think the year before, they've done it a couple times since COVID. It's a nice evening out, providing the sun.
Snowing.
Yeah.
You didn't want to say.
I didn't want to say it. I think that works.
In coordination with the Christmas party?
Nope, the part, that party is on the 12th, at 12:30. December 12th, at 12:30. I've already ordered all the food for all of the, I mean, set the menus, I should say, I haven't ordered the food, but I've already, for all of these programs and, I've gotten all the dates on the calendars. The other thing too is that the supporters are doing their Halloween lunch on the 31st. Um, if you have never eaten Swedish meatballs, they could come out of our kitchen, they're absolutely delicious. I'm glad I'm still going to be here for that. And, um, I believe the tickets are $8, and it'll be entertainment, costumes are optional, but always encouraged, and they're also doing a pumpkin decorating contest, so you can bring your pumpkin in. So I think you can start on Monday or Tuesday, right, and then they'll be judged on, on Thursday at one side. And, and the, the kids from the Montessori school coming in on the 29th in the afternoon, which will be great for y'all who came by. No, this is di, this is different. I actually heard from the Montessori lady, like, back in August, so.
Are they coming to present the program to us?
No, I think they're going to come and do some coloring and some singing. I mean, these are, these are munchkins, like little kids.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Munchkins.
Yeah.
You're determined, but I'd be tripping over kids in this thing, you know, communities.
I can't help it. And there are still a few seats left for the AARP, AARP driver safety class on the 31st of October, so.
That's a great class.
Absolutely is. That's, oh, I can't be responsible for anything after December 31st.
When was the AARP, uh, finance seminar?
That was for caregivers, and she canceled it because we only had one person registered. I couldn't see, bringing that speaker up here from the side to talk to one person.
No, we mentioned it.
Yeah.
I feel like I need to get some more information before I, because, uh, once you stop attending.
I'll be here for one more meeting.
Well, I was going to ask, Kim, really, still, are there any plans for signing, appointing, or there, I think, interim?
Um, we're, we don't have firm plans yet. We're looking at some different options. We've done some different things, um, so.
Has the process for getting, you know, for hiring the, the new permanent director, has that been determined as to what the process is going to be?
Yeah, yeah.
I believe it's up to the town manager to, uh, to decide the process.
Yeah, we're looking at, um, what we typically do. We're following the same process we've done with other, um, department head vacancies. We review the job description. Um, we'll likely update that, and we're now doing so in earnest. Um, so Alma leaves in November, will be out through December, but then, um, the other thing we do is, the position really wouldn't be open, vacant, filled, um, until probably early February, given other benefits that get paid out, so, um, so.
But you could have someone hired with a start date of February?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just to get it, it even works. That's why I'm wondering what that process is.
So we're, we're evaluating, looking at, again, starting with looking at the position description, um, you know, we, given that, I'm not sure, it's been a while since the position description was updated, so at a minimum, I would expect we would want to do that, and that's certainly something we would seek the councils and put on before. The select board serves as the personnel board, so they're the ones who would approve any changes to the job description.
So, two things, like I say, one will be at the interim, or set between now and.
We're looking at different options for that.
So maybe at our next meeting, you might, if we give us more detail on that.
We have had a discussion about that, not at the meeting, but just in conversation. Um, and I was asked to remind all of you, in this period of time, when we do not have a new director here. The council needs to step up a little bit and come in and answer phones and help out where the girls in the office determine if they need help. You're, you'd be here not as a paid employee, but as a volunteer, part of your serving on this council on aging, it becomes currency. And, and I am going to say, and a necessity, so please keep that thought in mind as we go forward. And if you are called and asked, I think we all know how to answer a phone, take a message, et cetera. So if you were asked on a specific date, that date does not work for you, please speak up and say, I could do this day, but not that day. So that each day that they're depending upon you, you would be available.
Just because all three lines read it was stolen. It happened a lot this morning. I don't know why. Everybody wanted us. No, and they'll, they'll appreciate that. I, you know, I've been working with Kristen and Stephanie and Mary Ellen, kind of passed the torch with some of the, like, the role of bills and, you know, the newsletter, and schedule, that's why I've scheduled as much stuff as I possibly could going forward, so.
Speaking of the newsletter, uh, helps like, do, is that suggestions? Help them?
Yes.
So that way.
Next week.
They won't have to try for the first time.
Nope, next week, and I, and Barbara, Barbara Keen is my contact at LPI, and she's more than happy to work with, you know, somebody for the first couple of months. It, it's interesting because I don't, like, I know how to do stuff, but I don't do it often, like, I only do it once a month, so I forget how to move those things around and put that color back there sometimes. So, but Barbara's been very, very good, and she's going to help, um, for a few months to make sure it gets done and set correctly, so.
Can you say, is Barbara?
Yeah.
Okay.
She works in, she's, yeah, that's good. Yeah. Next, no, I'm not going to say, I apologize. The, yeah, a chunk of the staff will be at the MCOA conference in Falmouth. Everybody's kind of looking forward to it. It's a little different approach this year. Our executive director has gone to be an angel, and we have a new director. Our executive director has gone to be an angel, and we have a new director and a whole new bunch of people. And it's, I don't know, I don't think it's going to quite be the same without David. But there are, there are a lot of good workshops and things, and a lot of good opportunities for networking for people. I'm going to take advantage and say goodbye to some colleagues I've had for years. And, yeah, so.
And that.
But it's the 20th, the 25th. Yeah. We might get a call to help in the office. We've got some of our tax work people that are just finishing up their hours, and they want to come in and help. And, you know, Stockton will say hi. Told, we've told Oliver, we told him that he had to behave that week. They'll all be calling us Monday morning, but.
Now, is this this month, October? You talked about the conference.
Yeah. All right. So I got to meet this lovely lady to my right here. One day last week, met with some residents from the Delwood property over on across Route 9. Actually, we arrived with.
A delicious apple cake.
Apple caramel cake, yeah. It was, it was simple. Anyway, and we have, we'll be meeting, we collectively will be meeting with them monthly for a while, just so they can become familiar with what we do and how we can kind of help each other. There's a lot of people that live up there. And by the time they're done, there'll be a lot more people that live up there. They want to become involved in the community. They want to become involved at the senior center. And some of the other town boards and committees, and we encourage that. It was a great meeting. We taught them some things. They informed us about a few things, so we will continue to do that going forward, at least for as long as they want to still be with us, so, yeah.
In that regard, I'd like to remind everybody here that our warning, moving from Tuesdays to Tuesdays.
Oh, yeah.
First Tuesday of the month, have breakfast with the police department.
Yeah.
Last month was the first time this season. And breakfast is served at 8:30. And chief, his staff, whoever he brings. And it's, well, it's in the boots by the way, at least.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's, yeah.
I know. It's an E2.
Tight up the slide.
Huh?
E2.
Oh, okay, yeah. And then next month, you get the drones back.
I'm looking forward to find out what the shields are that they're talking about tomorrow.
It's very interesting.
Something that they use in their cars now, police cars.
Where is this breakfast?
Here.
Oh, here?
And this morning, they sent out, someone in the office did send out a text message to everyone based on the fact that it was supposed to be signed in as of last Friday, but that most people were aware of it.
That we changed, that we had changed the date.
They said that, excuse me?
I said that we had changed the date, that just, that Tuesdays didn't work for everybody, so. And just following up on that, we were very proud of our liaison officer, Joe Savad, who was promoted to corporal last Tuesday night. I went to the selectives meeting at his invitation, and that's why I'll because took all the spaces downtown. Uh huh. Well, between him and the fire department, there were a lot of swearing in that day. But anyway, we're very proud of Joe, and, yeah, he's part of the family up here, part of the team.
Is he going to continue to be?
Yes. Yes. I talked to the chief about that, and I said, "If you're going to take him away, unless you can promote him." He said, "No, that wasn't it." Yeah, so. We have a trip going to Rice Farm. I didn't think people would be that upset about the fact that I hadn't landed, but it was Labor Day, and it just all got so busy and whatever. So we have a trip to Rice Farm for lunch on Friday, November 1st. I need a couple chaperones for that trip.
What is a chaperone?
Well, you'd have to go and make sure everybody who gets on, that everybody who gets on is signed in, and everybody who gets back on at the end, everybody gets back on at the end.
Come hits.
And, yeah.
Well, I'm going.
Okay. All right.
What time would I have to be here?
The bus is leaving here at 10:30.
What time would I have?
Probably between 10 and quarter past. And I was down that way on Saturday. Hopefully the rain isn't going to take all the leaves, because it was actually kind of pretty.
How many chaperones on your day, after life?
Well, it's nice to have a couple people that go just to kind of keep track. We did, sadly, did have an emergency on one of those trips there a couple years ago, and it was good to have a couple people around, so, okay. So just check everybody in and make sure they get back on the bus. And I'm standing in there trying to still decide what kind of lunch to buy.
It's a good lunch.
It's a delicious lunch, yes. I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to get down there. I have to take that day up. That's the day before my classroom meeting, and I have about 300 things to do and pick up, like flowers and cookies and all sorts of stuff that day. So I'm going to try to get down there one time. Because it's not that far from my house.
Now, it's basically the same as you have for dinner.
Yeah, it's just, it is. It's just several dollars cheaper, so I don't know why.
It's the same chicken?
It is. It's the chicken, the salad, the pasta, the french fries, the ice cream, the coffee, the whole, whatever, so. And there will be two other senior groups down there that day, I think Roger said, so. So. Thirty-two days from now, we'll be here in the morning.
Alma. Say that.
I know. It was a gentleman that was behind me today in the live, in the post office when I went to get the stamps for the newsletter goes, "What did I hear? You're retiring?" "You can't retire." I said, "Well, yes, I can. Thank you very much." I appreciate the sentiment from everybody, but it, it's time. I'm tired, so. But as I said before, you can come visit me, especially over the next month or so, because I'll be sitting at the house with my ice pack on my leg and whatever. I might not be too coherent the first couple of weeks, but after that, I'll be, I'll be fine. And I love the company. Kristin and Stephanie and Mary Ellen have been doing a lot more. Kristin's pretty good with the bill, well, we're still working on the bills. And payroll, Stephanie's taking over some of my other administrative things. She's had some, yeah, she's made a lot of protective services requests the last couple months. It's very sad. But anyone, and like I said, have a question. I don't want to talk to you on my way to the phone. I love calling.
Yeah, there's still people, homeless people coming in.
Shh. Nobody this week, nobody last week that I was aware of. Yeah, I, I, and it concerns me because of everything that's going on down south, if that, if they're going to start migrating north, although maybe not because it's cold here right now. Although my understanding is that Clearwater Beach looks like it's under about two feet of snow.
From the sand.
Yeah.
What did you ask?
No, have we had, have we had homeless people coming in? Which, like I said, none last week that I was aware of, so. Yeah.
Sure.
That was in the minutes. Yeah.
Preachers are all, so.
Yeah. There's a parish called Westboro Cares. It's all, kind of all of the social service agencies in town. Monthly, everybody's kind of struggling with this. It's not my favorite place to put them. So. The shelters are full, the hotels are full, but.
I can feel strongly that we, as the council, I urge everybody, if you call, to come in and help. Please don't say, "Oh, yeah," and then not show up. It would be better to say, "You can't do Monday, but I'd love to come in, call me," whatever.
Usually the mornings are busiest by about 2 o'clock. Although, today I'll probably be lying about this, but the phone will settle down. But from, you know, soon we turn on at 8:30 until, like I said, 2:00 up there. Once the bus gets out there, so.
We still have our regular bus drivers.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we had a couple days where.
So Alma, what is your last figure physically here?
Friday, November 8th.
Is there a designated person that we should contact, that we wish to volunteer?
Kristin? Any other questions, concerns? I have four more.
I have a question. Yes, maybe you can answer that question again. Have a break of the fall.
Uh, no.
After November 8th, who would be taking their place in the COA meetings for updates or what have you? Here, where are you?
That's what I was asking before.
It would probably either be Stephanie or Kristin at this point until town. Appoint somebody interim.
So one of them would get.
Well, we can decide, I guess, if they call. Well, because right now we're still. So the next meeting will be November 4th.
I think that's the last person.
Maybe, yeah.
Well, pretty similar as well.
Like, right, December. Can you represent? You're on the next. Be a motion to.
So please make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All votes in favor, vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.